All right, I think we will go ahead and call the meeting to order. It is 5:35. And we have, we kept this regular board meeting because we've been trying to work on school goals, Berlin-specific board goals for a while. And we're hoping to have some time to work on that, as well as you'll see on the agenda, the SU board communication goal, which is tasking each of the local boards to report back on what they believe that means, what the community engagement and communication looks like. We also had left over from last meeting, a hiring process question, and Bill's provided some information on that. And the board handbook statement that we took a look at last time, and were given the homework of coming with some revisions to that this time, if you had any. So, meeting has been called to order. Item 1.1, is there any revisions to the agenda?
So, one of the things I didn't put on here, Chris, was the approval of the board orders that you may want to add under there.
All right, so it'll be our one, I think, action item tonight?
Yep.
We had also talked about coming back to website, as far as if we had numbers yet to look at.
What were the numbers you were referring to, Karen?
Was Bill saying knowing about hiring new people, how those numbers were working out?
Would you be able to report on that tonight, Bill?
I'm ready to report on what we think it might take to, as in hours, I didn't put together a salary projection on the total cost, and if we have capability within new hires, and so we can talk about that.
So, Karen, if you're okay with this, we can bring that up either if it comes up under the Berlin board goals, under community engagement, or under the SU communication goals, we're going to talk about website. Any other revisions? Any public comments or correspondence? And then 1.3, just a reminder that our future, of our future meetings, we have another meeting in two and a half weeks at the, at U32 and SU Carousel meeting.
Did that calendar thing get figured out where it came out saying that it was at 11 to 12:30?
Krista was fixing that today, and it was on her task list. She was on this past week off on vacation, and she was trying to understand why, how that came out at 11. We had this issue a couple of years ago, and it goes to somehow your individual machine links up to the global clock system for all the computers?
Yeah, and I mean, I looked at mine, and all my settings looked right, because somebody had said to me, "Are your settings right, Karen?" And I'm like, "Yeah, my settings are right," and I checked with somebody else, and they had the same problem.
Mine said the same thing, but I just assumed it was just a...
Yeah, so she's trying to get, I mean, it's 5:30.
I was assuming.
Yeah.
Well, we have enough Berlin board members at the September 26th meeting. I would like to go to the U32 Montplayer soccer game, which is at 6 o'clock that night, under the lights, so...
My daughter will be in that, too.
Yeah.
So, I think there'll be some pretty important Act 46 discussions happening that night that are very crucial for which direction boards are going. If I can read the tea leaves from last week's meeting, and our executive meeting tomorrow next week.
You mean at the joint meeting?
Yep.
That that will happen?
Make your best decisions. I would never say to overtake the parenting duty. As someone who pleaded to one of your fellow board members, I was supposed to have a meeting on Friday, I said, "I'd like to go watch a soccer game in the country, and it takes me two hours to get there." Not two hours, but an hour and a half to get there. So, I get it, just want you to realize...
And if it were like any other game, I'd be totally like fine, I'll do my community service, and I'll get back to you if I'll be there. I will try to be there. I might not, do you know how like roughly, what will be done by 7?
I do not know, because the, I just don't know, the executive committee will make a decision. Matt and I have been having discussions, we might need to go really long for the SU meeting that night.
Okay.
Because, I mean, there's some really crucial dates, things that are coming up.
Yeah, I read the article in the paper.
Well, yeah, that's part of it, that's not all of it, so there's just some crucial decisions that need to be made in the next, really within the next month. Because we have a lot in front of us with all the draft articles, and how transition boards can be put in place, and where are we going, where are the, what are the boards thinking? There's been a question out there about what the direction is.
So, should that have been a discussion agenda for tonight, tonight? Because I don't know that I feel like...
No, the executive committee, I'm trying to be cautious about the confidential conversations I have with the full board chair, Matt DeGru, but at the same time, say, the urgency for the meeting. I'm sorry, I'm being kind of vague on that?
No, I just, I honestly don't have a sense of what direction this board wants to go in, and I know I missed a few meetings, so I might be out of the...
You haven't missed anything. We haven't really discussed it.
Direction, I don't know that we've even talked about it much since the last time I've been here.
We haven't, we've all kind of had a sit-back-and-watch approach for a while now, but it's coming to a time when we need to start talking about it again. I wasn't going to put it onto this agenda, I was thinking about putting it onto the next agenda, but I've been approached to join a lawsuit as the chair, not as the chair, ask if the Berlin board would want to join an Act 46 lawsuit, and I just haven't dug into it enough yet to be able to bring it to the full board to consider it. That's something we need to at least consider. I did receive that correspondence.
A new one? I know a year or two ago, there was a couple of things, I think I even passed along something to you when I saw something.
Yep, it's, I think it's the same, maybe the same group, I don't know.
It's a different group. This is a group, this group has not gone as a group before, this is, there have been three lawsuits in the state for Act 46, and they've all been thrown out of court.
So, who, let me ask, who asked? Who the correspondence was from?
The Vermont Schools.
So, nobody in the WCC, I should be wrong?
No, no, and it's a, it's a group that's doing it on a volunteer basis, and they're saying you could choose to join if you aren't forced to consolidate, then you can drop out of the litigation, but they're just trying to see who might be interested. I don't know that it's quite right for us to make a decision yet, but I wanted to gather a little more information on it and bring it, bring it before the board, but I wasn't ready to do that for this meeting.
Okay.
But you're right, we have to have a conversation about this, all the dates are coming to ahead, the executive committee is working.
I've asked the executive committee to tell me, "Guys, how do you want us to budget right now?" Because we're starting budgeting now in the buildings. You know, the SU budget, I'm going to suggest the executive committee has put off another one.
So, what time does the full board part of the start? Executive committee?
5:30. The executive committee no longer meets on the same night as the carousel meeting.
Oh, they don't?
We've changed it, because it just doesn't work. I mean, you've been there before, Vera, I finally learned, and Matt, and Stephen and I all said, "Let's not do this anymore."
And we're still planning on local board meetings that night?
Yep, I think there's going to be, probably, I mean, that's something we're going to figure out the week before with the executive committee, what's the yin and yang, there might be a back and forth a couple of times. Sorry, I can't, I wish, I just don't know, I mean, people look at me all the time, they're like, "So, what are we doing on this?" But I'm like, "I don't know, it's a governance question, negotiations, it's a governance question." I don't have an answer. I can say that to the teachers. So, I don't know who you'll be negotiating with past November 30th, knowing our boards that'll support the people that'll be here that are here now at the beginning, but I don't know.
And do you know anything about the state board, like, taking all the way, they're going to take right up till November 30th? Could they possibly come in with some preliminary?
Their last meeting, their last warned meeting right now, or scheduled meeting, I should say, is November 28th. So, I bet they'll go, it was to November 28th.
Okay.
They also are looking at the 90-day part that, if you read those draft rules, and looking up in town meetings and getting that timing right.
Yep.
So, things will happen in town meetings.
Okay. All right, anything else under 1.0, 1.1 to 1.3? We'll move on.
Could I ask one other question? I think I had sent something to you, Bill, to ask, which I guess would kind of fall under communication, but I was a little confused on the school website. It had, when it said, "Check out this important," I forget how it said it, "important letter from the superintendent" or something, it's a letter to Washington Central Educators, where I was thinking it would be like a copy of the "Welcome Back" letter, and so I wasn't really sure if this one to the staff was meant to be there on the website, and if the one to the families was going to be posted there.
So, that letter that I wrote is to the staff?
And it's on the front of the website.
Yeah, okay, we can switch that around.
So, I was thinking that it was meant to be one for families, but I wasn't positive.
No, I never write one to families, the principals do that.
Where did you find that under?
On the front page, after it says that...
Oh, in miscellaneous...
There's some message about the school has been here since 1969, and at the end of that paragraph, then it says, "Look here," here is capitalized.
You can fix that. So, moving on to the discussion agenda, 2.1, Berlin board goals. At the last meeting, or maybe it was the meeting before, I forget, we adopted the, I think it was the last meeting, we adopted the SU board, those three broad goals, goal one being board governance and operations, goal two being monitoring of student learning, and goal three being community engagement. Those cover a number of things that we had in our Berlin-specific board goals, but there was some discussion about there being some particular details in those that we might want to maintain, as opposed to just discarding those for the three big SU board goals. And it's always good to come back to these every once in a while and update them, so these haven't been, I don't know that they've been touched much in the last two to three years.
I actually don't like the way these are laid out, or, I don't know, I feel like there's a piece missing there as far as the, how the board's going to monitor that these are...
Absolutely.
...being done, or revisited, or...
Yep.
I feel like there's a, there's a piece missing.
Definitely.
Because of that reason, they, you don't revisit them.
Yeah, and it's, some of them are very difficult to measure, they're not, what's the acronym, SMART goals?
Yeah, they're not measurable.
Specific or measurable.
Yeah.
Some of them are not time-bound, so you don't really know when you've gotten there.
Right.
Achievable's another one, so are they achievable?
Specific, measurable, achievable, I forget what the R is. Relevant.
Relevant.
Thank you, and timely.
Timely.
Time-bound or timely.
Yeah, so, yeah, no, I don't have any ties to this, it was part of the original drafting of them, but I'm open to starting from scratch, changing format, and I do want to actually hear from both Bill and Erin, what's helpful to you if we're, as a school board, trying to kind of set the direction or set the North Star here, what's helpful for you from us?
Can I just put in?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just, for us as a board, I don't want to get like stuck in the weeds on wordsmithing and making sure they're absolutely perfect. I want to see us spending our time length, get our goals done, and not drag it out over five meetings, and work on a timeline when Bill, or central office, or Erin will get back to us, which I think Bill has very much worked on that timeline. So, I really think it's worth looking at the timeline that you have built for reporting back for like the academic pieces, the communications piece kind of is more volatile, falls on us, but I feel there are other pieces that are already built into a timeline, let's build it from there, and pick out the ones that we feel are the most important, and pick out the ones that we know that we can work on. And that's where I feel like some of these, it's not work that we have to do, and if we're putting work on somebody else, I want it to be meaningful and something that we're going to get the results back.
I just asked Erin if she has any chart paper, because it might be easier to list, I mean, I think you guys could say in probably about two minutes, what you're, what's important to you, you know, and come to an agreement on that pretty quickly, you know, and what does the board, how's the board ensure that? And Vera's been in the school quality conversations for a couple of times now, so that, I think that's been a really helpful conversation to hear from colleagues, what's important. And then, the reason I was just asking Erin for some chart paper was just to kind of show you some of the key milestones for when data can happen, and link it back to the work that we did with Nate this summer, Nate Levinson, and say, so you can see, because there's, one of the things that, there are good and bad parts of No Child Left Behind, good part, use data to drive your work and set goals, bad part, some of the misuse of data, and the misuse of assessment. So, showing you a quick little timeline that I could draw for you, would make it a lot easier to kind of see that and do what you were talking about, Vera, at the same time, like, how do we, how do we know that, how do we, how do we ensure we're doing the monitoring we should do as a system?
Yeah.
Now, that, I think you've all heard from me, I really believe that's a really key piece of board. A lot of times, monitoring the operations or little pieces, does, you kind of lose the forest to the trees in my mind. And it's not just monitoring the forest either, it's like, when do you need to go into a deep dive, and when don't you? And I think there's reasons to do that as a board, when, you know, you're not seeing changes or improvements.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, you look back at these, and what, I think what these really did accomplish was, we talked about behavior and disruption in the classroom, and a lot was set off from that. That was what was high on the list at the time.
And it comes up in like every goal.
Yep, and, but, I mean, that's, that helped inform, I think, you and Carol, that that's what we were really concerned about at the time, but there's, as Vera said, there's a lot of stuff in here that's just kind of, I don't know what, thinking out loud, detail specific, that probably wasn't measurable and not real helpful to you all.
For me, it's, I think for any, any system, what gets monitored, what gets done, but if you try to monitor too much or too fine a grain level, then usually it's like, well, you can't do all of that. So, it's that right level, and it's giving authority and responsibility throughout the system. You can't get authority without responsibility, you can't get responsibility without having some authority to maybe have your own input in how it works. So, that's a, that's one of my big management philosophies, is you have to get that, and then a colleague of mine said, "Bill, you should add the word accountability." So, authority, responsibility, accountability, like, and that's the checking part that we're talking about in monitoring.
The other thing that always comes to mind for me here is, we shouldn't be reinventing the wheel. I know, all the other schools in the district, all the other...
Not all of them, some of them have.
Some of them have, have already done this work.
Well, they've done some.
There's some that don't even want board goals.
Right, there are some that don't want them, yeah, yeah, Vera's right.
They want no part of it, which is kind of, I mean, you got to give some direction and some...
Well, even whether or not you call it a goal of just things that you are...
A work planner.
Well, routinely checking in on, such is the behavioral stuff. I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be us that brings it up, but if we haven't heard anything from Erin in some time in it, just one of those things that you want to go back to and say, "How was that going?" I mean, it's the same with, with most of the stuff on there with communication. I mean, you want to, even if we have the best goals, best plans, I mean, to me, it's just one of those things you just kind of touch base on every once in a while.
So, open to suggestion on how we start here?
I don't know how we start, but I'm going to jump, jump right in.
Sure.
So, two of the ones that I don't feel necessarily fall into the whole board goals that we had...
Yep.
Was increase academic growth and success.
So, are you under goal one?
You can number it whichever one you want.
I mean, under the existing goals, or you don't want to even start there, you just want to...
No, I think she's just...
I'm just starting.
Okay.
I guess for me, the goals that we had, SUY would be 1, 2, 3, and then...
Gotcha.
This would be a 4 or some other number?
Yes.
Yep.
Depending on if we were prioritizing it in any way.
So, say that again, Vera, what was it?
Increase academic growth and success. Which, to me, I'm leaving it broad for a very specific reason. One, I don't want to see a pigeonhole into something, but to me, that opens it up, so it doesn't necessarily have to be in the classroom. It can be in the community, it can be many different things. And number two, I'm not sure that Bill would agree with me on this, but as a board, provide and support professional development for all staff.
I would support that.
What's that?
I would support that.
I just, I didn't know if you'd support it as a goal for us, per se, but I'm just...
I want to know more about it.
So, this is...
You can say it either way.
And then the last one was policy, which, well, obviously were there, so I think to hold us accountable for making sure we get through this process is making sure that the policies are up to date in order.
Well, to that one, I would tag on policies and procedures. We had a conversation about that at the last meeting, Vera.
Which I missed.
That's what I'm saying, too.
I missed, and we didn't have the minutes.
We don't have the...
No, there's, I just created them.
No, I took them offline.
So...
I've got the minutes that I took.
Because you have your regular scheduled meetings on the 26th, so your business meetings on the 26th, so this was not, I didn't put anything on here for business.
Okay, all right, so those are the, what I have.
Good, and you would, I'm assuming from that, that you would say, and maybe you wouldn't, this whole...
I wouldn't, because I think I've been told that we don't get into the minutia of how, just given the direction of this is what our goals are, and how they get there is not up to us, correct? Not that you don't want input or feedback, it's...
I think, let me put it a different way. I think it's to say, if there's something that if we said a how, and you said, "Hey, the community's going to have a real big problem with that," you should know that. But when it comes to educational practice, when it says to increase student achievement, just go off of that one, or support the PD, let's go to that one. Like, we want to make sure as a board that resources are there, so all teachers are doing professional development, they need to become the best practitioners they can be. So, you're not going to say, you know, pick this, I interpret it this way, and tell me if I'm wrong. We want to ensure that resources are there, that teachers are doing it, if you need more days, let us know, you need more resources, let us know. But, you know, which PD is the best one for math instruction? You got a bunch of math experts around there, let them go figure that out.
Yes.
You know?
But what you were saying, Vera, was not just teachers, you said staff.
Yeah, and Bill said all staff when he...
Yeah, he said all staff.
I thought you said teachers there.
I may have, but, and I'm not, you know, I think for a different, you know, this goes back, I mean, this is why I think having that grounding in the retreat work, I mean, I think Nate really kind of helped set up those, kind of those lines of delineation, too, of like, "Hey, board members, you should really be ensuring that these things are happening," and then ask your leadership team, and that's part of what we're talking about, school quality, is we, you want to see increased learning, so if we're talking about goal two, that's, that's in there, who sets the goal? Who actually sets the SMART goal, the way Chris was talking about, that says, "We're at 50%, we're going to be at 59%"? Who sets that? You know, and who sets the methods to how to get there? And what I heard you say, "I want to see increased," I'm not even telling you how much, you know, who, because there's, like, how much growth can you expect to see, and it's different depending on where the performance is at, within a system, when you start to look at the student population. And, you know, for anyone that's in either of our positions, I would say that you can't get there until you've had a conversation with the teachers, when they look at their initial, where the kids are at, and how many kids do they think they can move from performing at this level to performing at that level? Enroll that all up.
One of the supervisory, full board, whatever we're calling that, at the policy meeting, we were talking about the community engagement, there was a, a policy that we were looking at, and everybody agreed, it's not really what we were all thinking, and so that's an area, though, where getting some more specifics from each of the boards to find out what we had in mind when we said community engagement, what do we mean by that, is really important, because everybody certainly does seem to have their own spin on what that is.
That's where I was kind of going with my question, was we do have one goal here that's public engagement, and I heard what you said earlier about that, it's really the board's job to drive that. Is that an appropriate goal for us to set for the school, or is that a goal for ourselves?
I would say that's a goal for us, but that's, like I said, that's one out of three of us.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess it's kind of a little bit on both, but I really feel like where the school is at, and when it comes to budget, and the exciting things that are happening, I really feel like it's, it kind of falls on us to promote the school and sell the school, and to, to put ourselves out there, to answer questions, and to be the, kind of in-between the community and the school.
I'm not into selling, but I'm into informing.
Okay, that's a better one. I will change my one, but they take out, that would, informing is better.
But, yeah, when we were discussing it, the policy that we were looking at seemed to say, like, you want to reach out to the community and like find out what their expectations were and all, where I was like, what I was thinking is that you have this ongoing back and forth, you know, that it isn't just getting out some information before budget time, or having the community say whatever and checking back with them in two or three years, you know, "What are you thinking now?", it's just this very much ongoing in many different avenues of sharing information.
Yeah.
Which is, Adrienne said that's the sense that she got from the U32 board also, is more along the lines of this ongoing communication with the community, both school community and wider community.
Just say that I fully support those three that you mentioned, I can get behind those, I don't know about you, Vera?
Yeah.
And I just wonder if there are any others? We had four categories of goals, and have four categories of goals. It was academic and behavioral, fiscal, which has never really made a lot of sense to me. And that some of the subcategories in fiscal are good, like, we want to have a long-range capital plan, we want to have a clear and understandable budget that gets community support, but I'm not sure those are, I don't know that I see the utility in stating those as goals, but... The third was school climate, which I think probably deserves a little bit of discussion, and public engagement was out of the hole. And does that just mean communicating, informing, or is that also, you know, getting people into the school, and having activities in the school, and maybe having the school itself through the administration, a piece of communication and engaging the public, too?
Did you have some ideas, Chris? Outside of you?
Well, one of the areas that you just mentioned, Chris, was behavior, and while behavior could stand on its own, you could also think of it as being a piece of the increased academic growth and success, in that behaviors need to be working well, not only for individuals to see that growth, but for their classmates to see that growth. So, I could see that being encompassed...
I think so, too.
...in that. And I, I think it's really good to have goals be as positive as possible, and just saying behavior out there, I think a lot of people immediately think of poor behavior...
Yeah.
Rather than... Rather than outstanding behavior. The, I agree, the fiscal, I mean, that's, that's not really a goal, that, that's just ongoing, every year we deal with budgeting and unforeseen issues that come up that are going to end up needing to be dealt with, I don't see that as being a goal at all.
I don't either.
Yeah, and, and to me, are not necessarily saying we feel it needs to be a goal right now, to me, doesn't take it off the table totally, it means you can only have so many goals that you're focused on, and it doesn't mean you are necessarily going to drop the ball on anything else that should be checked in on a regular basis, but if you have too many goals, there's nowhere to focus. So, I think just having the supervisory-wide goals and having, you know, I don't know, I don't know what number to say, I don't think you can say a number, keeping it to a minimum is good, to not have too much to have it be overwhelming. After all, we only meet so many times a year.
So are there any areas in particular, or, or concepts, or just things in particular that are important to you, Corinne, to have a goal toward beyond academic success, this professional development that Vera mentioned, and the policy governance pieces?
No, because I, to me, the policy is so big, I mean, and we, we just now are all getting on the same page, literally, and still need to get the procedure stuff with it, and that's, how can you know, how can you have any oversight or comment if you don't know what you're working with? And so, I think this is still going to take some time to get this all where we're all comfortable with what's included in what we have. Good, nothing more.
As you're looking at this, I'm hoping we can have a better template than this for our next set of four goals when we adopt them.
I think so, I think it's going to be rather short, which is what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
And some fairly broad statements that can encompass a lot. I think the whole public engagement piece can go right within the goal number three of the board.
Yes.
Supervisory and new board goals. Trying to think if school climate needs to be addressed in any way, or if that's wrapped into any of these other goals. It was kind of a brain dump of what we were thinking at the time, and not really a strategic goal-setting exercise when we put these down, I think.
For me, I think that could come out, and it kind of can be taken over by the provide and support professional development for all staff, because to me, it kind of falls in that school climate of working together as a team, and within your community, within your school, kind of all encompasses in that professional development piece, for me.
Yeah, I was wondering if there's some way we could extend that, add a few words that would show that it's a little broader than that.
Mm-hmm.
I don't have a thought about that at this very moment, but...
When you get them written down, you'll have more time to react to.
Something, maybe along the lines of, I don't know, provide and support professional development for all staff, that creates a...
Increases, that increases student performance, that's what you're going after. We give support to a custodian, or they're making sure that the facility is better maintained and clean, which is environments in the top 10 of things that are true to student learning. Isn't that the outcome you're after?
Yes.
It's kind of an if-and-statement, if we provide high-quality and professional development.
Well, to me, the example you just gave wouldn't just be about custodial staff, having it just be about the environmental things and all, but there might be something about working with students or other people, just because they're people that are around all the time, in all kinds of different situations, so I would think, I would think you could even broaden out what's available to them. Over the years, there's certainly been some that just really stick to themselves, and others that you see having conversations, and, and some of that's a personality thing, but...
Vera, how is goal two from the SU and the increased student learning that you had put, how do those differ?
How is the SU one?
The SU is develop a more thorough, data-based understanding of student learning in our supervisory union to inform board-level strategies, budgets, monitoring, and communication.
I guess it doesn't, other than... Less wordy. So it really sticks out there, but it really isn't, I mean, it is encompassed in that.
Could you read this, that one again?
Develop a more thorough, data-based understanding of student learning in our SU to inform board-level strategies, budgets, monitoring, and communication.
I guess to me, that one is more about the reporting, who's going to report, what are they going to report, when are they going to report about the student, and this one is more about the first step of increasing the academic growth, and then that one is more about the reporting out piece of it. I mean, this does...
I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm listening to your thinking.
This does fall into that.
Yeah.
And I, I guess for me, this would be, I'd want to see the increase in academic growth in all of our students, and that would be the follow-up piece of creating the reporting out, when it's going to be reported out, which then affects your fiscal piece, and what was the second part that's in that?
Board-level strategies, budgets, monitoring, and communication.
So yeah, the strategies on how to approach, if there is a child that's not meeting, how are we going to...
Well, what I liked, when you were first saying that, although you were saying academic growth and success, you were quick to say, not only in school, but in the community, and it just seemed more of a, it's about the kid, not just how they're doing in math.
Right.
You know, that it...
The whole child.
Yeah. Whereas that, in hearing you read it to me, sounds much more of a, what's happening in math and writing and...
So do you, as a board, want to be unaccountable for everything that's happening in a child's life?
No, but I like how this was just kind of open, I mean, Vera was saying she had this open and broad on purpose to be able to look at it, it's not saying that it has to be for each and every student, it's just...
Under me, my notes, I had growth within, and I used an example of Genius Hour, and then I went on to say, students are empowered to explore their own passions and interests in the real world of, it could be what they take for music lessons outside of school. No, I'm not, I don't want to put the board in a situation of, we are trying to control that, to oversee what's happening outside of school, but yet bring it into their everyday learning in school.
So, I mean, the reason I'm asking you these questions, and...
No, they're good questions.
There's no right one to think about, but I went right, we went back to the acronym from SMART goals, specific, measurable, attainable.
Relevant.
Relevant, thank you, I always forget that one, and timely. So, the more specific we are to it, you know, and it's trying to find that, and that's what you've been talking about since the beginning here, Vera, is like, what's the role where we do that, and then where do the administrators, and where do the teachers do that, and where do the students do that, frankly? So I think that's, it's trying to find all that balance, and for me, the data piece, it's a cycle, so you first place, you're like, where are you at right now, so that's my data. What's that tell you about the kids you're working with? If I'm a teacher, if I'm a principal, what's that telling me about the school if I'm myself? What's that telling me across the SU? Where are some stra, you know, where are our kids at? How many, let's dig into that data and try to tear, what's that tell us? And what do we think we can do for strategies? Where are the resources we need for those strategies? Implement them, and then we're back to that data step again. So I think it's, it's more, I want to show more like a spiral of that, you know, as I go around here with my hand, to think about that planning, and you have that data informing it, so I think you can come into that data wherever you want to come into it, realizing it's that spiral that you're going to have, of, the first set that you just took might be a learning pre-assessment, and you might have a post-assessment, but that post-assessment might be the pre-assessment for the next step. Can I explain that one more? Maybe you want to interject in there, or kind of... And so it's, I think there, I think it's all good, I mean, I, I think that, I just, that's what I wanted to kind of hear from, when I asked you, Vera, was, you know, what are you envisioning, thinking, because I like the idea of the increased student learning, I think every board would argue that's what we want to do, and how does that fit in the monitoring? Because one of the questions, one of those conversations Cory and I had this morning is, I said, Cory, I don't, I think the board, and this is one of the things Nate left with, was saying, you should ask the leadership team to come back with a goal that they're going to meet. Insisting there is a goal, but not saying what it is, and tell you how it's going to be done, to see if that how's going to be okay with the community. Because he gave a real good, he told a real life story for himself, that he didn't understand the community piece in his job, and that came back, and he was trying to go too fast for the community. So it's that figuring that back, and that's why that how discussion is, it's important to have, not to govern the exact how, but like, here's feedback, like, you can go try that, but that might, that'll work really well, or you might want to change some of your messaging on that one, or think about something totally different. So I don't know how to put that all in the goal piece for you right this second sitting here, but that would be some of my thinking about that student monitoring. And I'm fine either way, with it being another goal for Berlin, or being interjected, I'm just giving you some points to think about.
Okay, thank you. So I think I have enough to come up with a rough draft for next meeting, for you all to look at, some brief, broad goals in addition to the three SU board goals, we'll have at least these three for Vera, if you come up with anything, Corinne, send it, send it my way, I may add order to myself, and then we'll have something to react to at the next meeting.
And we'll get it before the next meeting? I'm just thinking about if Pete, no, I just mean if Peter will have a chance.
Hold it in the morning.
I wasn't going there, I just meant if Peter would see it before, before the next meeting.
Yes, for sure. All right. Next up on the agenda is the SU communication goal, so I think we've started to talk about this a little bit, but I think what the, what we're looking for, our task as a local board, is to provide input on the purpose of board-level community engagement. So like you said, Corinne, everybody kind of sees this as something different, is it communicating out to the community, is it gathering input from the community, is it a dialogue, is it some other form of bringing people into the school? There's a lot that could go into that, so I think our, our job is to kind of try to put to paper what we consider community engagement to be, and what's the purpose of community engagement. We do have our board goals, for the moment, which had a whole section on, called public engagement, and again, it was kind of a flow of thoughts, more than a purpose or a goal. But it talked about, at the time, we had a lack of community awareness or involvement with the school board, we had limited communication among parents and the community and educators, that students were disconnected from adults in the community, that the school culture and climate negatively affected by disengaged, is negatively affected by disengaged parents and community, parents not involved in their child's learning as teaching partners, community unaware of educational goals, PTNA and board do collaborate, that was current state at the time, and it still is somewhat, where we're missed opportunities with interested audiences, and that we might be stifling motivated community members to participate in the school. And as a desired state, we wanted the community informed about school successes and challenges, we wanted volunteerism to be high, well-attended school functions, contributions to our budget discussions, contributions to our vision for the school, an open line of communication with the board, that parents, teachers, and neighbors are all engaged, that the school board and select board communicate and collaborate, and that there's a maximized information flow and transparency within every available method. I think that just kind of helps frame the variety of approaches you can take to this goal, means a little something different to everybody. Thoughts on the purpose of community engagement, or what our goal is as a board in engaging the community? Vera, you mentioned selling, or promoting the school, or informing people about what's going on at the school, that's certainly one piece of it.
I think it's, I think sometimes it's difficult to reach the whole community, if people are visiting the website or receiving the newsletter, and is the newsletter back till just once a month?
It's still up once a month.
If you don't mind, can we, what's our purpose in communicating before we get into the specific ways?
Can I ask a question, too, to make you think, I don't need an answer? What's the difference between school engagement and community engagement? Think about that.
Can I give my opinion?
You can get, do whatever you want, you can decide to respond or not, I just, I've given that same question to many boards.
School engagement, to me, it means messages are only going out to just the, the school people, the school community, whereas the public or community, to me, would be the whole town, like, whoever's on the checklist, or however a whole town piece of mailing would be sent out, which to me are two very different things. I mean, we have 220, 220 families.
Whatever, you got it.
Versus the, how many, how, how many are on the checklist right now?
About 1,900.
And where I was going with that is, how we communicate and who we communicate with, sometimes are going to be very different things. Obviously, if that's signed up for soccer, that's not going to go out to the whole community, that's going to be to the school community. Whereas, we're having this Act 46 discussion that's going to affect everybody in our towns, in our surrounding towns, please join us for this discussion, would be a whole town community piece to communicate. But where I was going with that is, sometimes how we communicate can be costly to make sure that everybody's getting the information, whether it's our agenda's posted in the newspaper, or, you know, we have this upcoming Act 46 meeting, please join us, we want your input, whatever. Sending out postcards, any of those pieces can be costly, so I think that's where sometimes I struggle with, you know, how to communicate and not have it cost the school and the town more money.
I disagree with one of the things you said, the example that you used, as far as if it's soccer sign-up time, that is only for the school, if there are homeschooling families in town, unless they go to the website and find it there and all, there, there could potentially be others that want to know, or could be somebody, like, my husband and I, no longer kids in school, but a reminder, seeing soccer's happening and they're still looking for coaches, you know, you might get somebody that would actually be willing to, to help out, if they knew, if they've got that reminder, and I think that's... And I think that's been part of the issue with communication in my mind, is that there's been a lot of great communication and great stuff going on, but it's been very inconsistent as far as when it gets out. It's like, okay, so for a couple of things in the last year, we decided that a postcard or something was gonna go out to people on the checklist, or, you know, however you decide you want to do it. But people might not have heard anything by that means in quite a while. And so it's like, oh, here's a piece of information, you know? Wonder why I haven't heard anything else from them? And just, and just getting things consistent. So for as much as we need an overarching, you know, why are we communicating and what are we communicating about? To me, it's more of a checklist of, you know, these are the ways we want to communicate out and will, and, and having there be real clarity as far as who's gonna do it. Because we've even stumbled since I've been on the board as far as, well, who's gonna put it on to Front Porch Forum? You know, is it coming from one of us? Is it coming from the office? Are we getting it from Bill first? And there can be a whole lot of delays of people waiting on each other. You know, who's writing the message that's going out? Say nothing about who is actually putting it in places. When Chris Dodge was principal, he did a great job of getting photos into the world on a regular basis. You know, which is a wonderful thing, but that does take effort from a particular person to make it happen and, you know, meet deadlines if it's a timely thing. If it's not timely, you know, you could send it and it's okay if it happened two weeks ago. And I think something that we really lost when the school newsletter went to being monthly was really making it clear what's coming up. It's a fantastic job of looking at what's been going on for the last month, but the calendar of events that does get pushed out some weekly, I think that's still sketchy as far as who to get in touch with when you see something's coming up. Because it used to be in the weekly newsletter, you'd get a lot of detail with that as far as who's doing it, and who do you get in touch with about it, and so forth. And now it's just this little line of, you know, it's happening, but it may not give you enough, and you may not grab hold of it and say, okay, I need to figure this out.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yeah.
Something we knew. Is there a, a community newsletter of some kind that includes all municipality stuff?
My thing would be the closest thing to it. The town hasn't put out a newsletter in several years. They used to have one that would go out twice a year. And that fell by the wayside because of staffing issues over at the town. And there, there's been talk about bringing it back, which, that was something that had some advertising on it to help pay for it. And was sent out paper copies by the town. And so the, what I do, the news to know and the Front Porch Forum, those are really the things that get to the most other people. It, it isn't necessarily, only some of it overlaps in that I know I'm not sending it to a lot of the parents that are here. So it's the school that needs to get the word out to those guys. But I had a whole lot of other people who don't have kids at the school.
So I look at the question that's on the table about, you know, school families versus the rest of the community. And I guess, I want to do everything I can to meet whatever the expectation is. If the expectation is that the school needs to get things to everybody in the community, what are some of the resources? Looking at the town website, under community, I mean, you have all the different, like, departments, if you will. Is there expectations for those, you know, you have the library, historical society, fire department? You know, are, are they getting things out to, to all families in some way that we could mirror? As, you know, I know it's different municipalities, if you will, but I'm just trying to think about, these things mostly looks to their website. Are we going above and beyond to reach out to families beyond what everything else in the community is doing? Or is there a way that we can all together be part of something where it's getting it onto the doorstep? So it kind of sounds like that's the way to get things what you want out, is to get it to the hands of people. Is there a way, you know what I mean? I guess that was my question about the newsletter, is there?
Well, one of the things that I've tried to encourage the select board, and it still hasn't happened yet, was to at least get out a mailing to all folks that describes where they can find information. Because I think we have a lot of new people, there's all this turnover in town, that may not know what does exist for communications. And there is a page that's in the family handbook, the last one, which was information and events. And that tells some of them as far as the recorded message thing that we update at the town every week, which includes school stuff, if, if we know about it, if it seems like something that community should know. And the Front Porch Forum, and the News to Know, and Bus Stop Conversations, and the Orca Media, and just trying to make it clear and having a variety of things. Because everything doesn't work for everybody, which is why you're trying to get it out in so many places. So somebody that doesn't have computer access, they might like just calling the recorded phone line, because most everybody in town does have a phone, even if they don't have a working computer. Or the, the Orca Media, although a lot of people use it online, you can turn into, at least some people can turn into one of the educational channels and watch it on TV. But, and that's just it, it's figuring out a consistent way and what information would be appropriate to get out in those different ways.
So I've heard a lot of how and what. And I actually heard Corinne say, we know why. I haven't heard you guys verbalize why you want community engagement. Maybe I missed it, but I didn't hear that. Like, why are you doing it? I think each have your own reason, but if you come to a collective why, then you can get to the how and the what. Because I think you'll, you'll bound around a lot of hows and whats without knowing the clear why. Because if you know the why, and this has been said through public access, and talks about engaging democracies. If you have that why really clear, then you'll find the correct how and what to do that why. You don't have the clear why, you try a lot of different things.
Well, to me, you try a lot of different things because not everybody can get the information in the, in the same manner. But as far as why, it's because this is the community's school. A lot of people see it as the center of the community. A lot of money, in fact, more money than goes into the town budget, goes into school budgets. And so to keep people informed and make sure that they're aware of how they can be engaged for, for pieces of it that, that they would be interested in. And whether that's coming in to watch a performance, whether it be a concert, a play, or whatever, some kind of performance. Or whether it's that there's adult pickup basketball or volleyball going on, or that they need somebody to come in and talk about their Canadian roots, or, you know, whatever it may be for something that's going on, whether it's Genius Hour or whatever's going on. Making sure people know about where their tax dollars are going. Having, having somebody that can explain it to them. And just realizing that even if you don't have kids here, it is a very important piece of the community. I, I'm probably missing several other points, but I mean, it, to me, it's, it's simply the, I don't know, can you say the heartbeat of the community? It really is where so much is going on.
In my other school, we did a, we had kind of a school board, select board partnership to do a monthly newsletter. Well, it wasn't monthly, it was like four, five times a year. Quarterly, I guess. We both shared a cost, but it was mostly school stuff. You know, there were other pieces, town, you know, road report, commissioner report. I mean, there was all kinds of things in there, if there were any senior clubs or whatever. That was kind of a shared cost.
Who actually did it though, who put it together?
We had, we had somebody that vol-, I don't know if it was volunteer, but she would help, it was one person that helped coordinate all the pieces that she got. And then we did, was it postal, postal patron, which gets to everybody.
So resident at type of addresses?
I mean, it's really, I don't think this is a new, you know, or a challenge that is unique to Berlin. I think how do you get something to all residents? I mean, what are the, I was saying, what are, what are the, what are the ways? You know, we're kind of getting away from why a little bit, but, you know, what are the ways to, to get something to everybody? I mean, it's still in this day and age, it's, it's in their mailbox, you know? Not everybody has internet, not everybody has Facebook or Twitter, or, or, you know, we, we as a school can't phone call every person through a, through a call. So, you know, what's the, what's the most impactful way to communicate to everybody? It's, it's in the mailbox, you know? So it's those kinds of things I think about too, like, how can we go beyond just families? So it's just, I don't know if you've thought there as well?
I'd get behind that.
I know you would.
I'd set it just in case there was any question.
Yeah, yeah. I think you covered it, covered it well, Corinne. When I think about it, I want to engage the public. I want to take it, bring any assets from the community into the school, bring any assets from the school back out to the community. It's the whole buy-in piece of having one know what's going on in the school so that the community will hopefully support whatever budgets we, we bring forward, assuming they're responsible budgets. It is the center of the community, and it is, the school is paid for by Berlin residents, so taxpayers. And we want to engage everyone in the success of our children here. So I think that's some of the why for me that makes, I think, for a successful school is making sure we get the word out, we get the input back in. It's a two-way street. And that's really interesting to think about, a community newsletter that might have town, school, fire department, police, library, folks, whatever else, historical society, and on and on. Each have a little piece in it maybe, and share the cost of publishing it. It's really hard to reach those people who are not online. It's not that hard, it's just more expensive and it's time-consuming.
Well, it would really make you sit down and focus if, if it was gonna be, for instance, quarterly, just because I can think quarterly in my mind, and that's kind of seasonal. And, I mean, you know the things that are coming up on a regular basis, you know, from year to year, but might be new to people that are new in town, or, or maybe new in some other way. I mean, new to the fact that they don't have any kids in school and reminding them of, you know, some stuff going on. So you really have to kind of think that out. I know with the mailings that we did, some of those were kind of last minute, gotta get it done, gotta get it out because a vote's coming up. And so you, you really need to be more thoughtful as far as what's coming up to try to get it included appropriately in something that's already going out. Which there's nothing wrong with that, to be planning ahead.
And I appreciate the distinction you're asking for here between community engagement and school engagement, because we're all, always getting earfuls about what the school should be doing, or what a specific, you know, specific teacher should be doing to, to stay in touch with parents. Because it's very different from the community engagement piece that we're more responsible for.
Because I would say, on the volunteer side, Berlin has probably one of the highest percentage of parent volunteerism of any of the schools in Washington Central. And just with a volunteer, volunteer person, support person for every classroom. I'm not talking about number of hours, but just the people that are engaged in something. It can be something as little as an hour or two, it's much, it's really high. When I've ever been to community events, and it's maybe only been three or four over the years I've been here, great turnout compared to some schools I can think of. So, and all, all Washington Central parents, they're a lot. A lot, a lot of community turnout. So I, I would say, I think you should be commended, and our community should be commended, for the amount of school participation that there is. We always want more, and that's always a good thing. But we have, we have good involvement.
Well, as I said, I think there has been a lot of good communication and all. It isn't just, it isn't always consistent in, in getting it out. And I think sometimes people kind of slip and think, oh, well, everybody knows about that because we do it every year. And I don't just mean the school, I mean anywhere in town. To them, it's something annual. But if you're the new person in town, or newly don't have a kid involved in, in something, then if you don't put it on their radar soon enough, then it's a shame if they wanted to be involved and couldn't be.
It's like the spaghetti dinner at the church every fall. They only know about it because they see the sign outside. It's not because they sent something out.
Or it's because they have limited ways in which to get it out.
It's a good thing they put the sign out.
Did you have any other thoughts on the why?
I think you guys covered every point that I, I would say did all.
So thoughts on the how, then? And then keeping in mind the distinction between school communication, it's not necessarily gonna be out for the whole community, sometimes it might, and community communication, which is probably going to land on us.
Well, go ahead.
The school newsletter that's being done once a month, I do agree with Corinne. I'd rather see it, like, yes, let's celebrate the successes and things that have happened in, in the month, but also have it very directed to what's coming up. You know, whether it's our harvest luncheon, and we're looking, you know, we want people to join us for the harvest luncheon, you can buy tickets. You know, be more informative about the things coming up, rather than just have it show up on the calendar print, but actually a little blurb about some of the events coming up. Because a lot of it is, this is what we've done. This is, I guess, oldness. But along with that, how the things are coming up, you know, and, I guess, being mindful of that timing. Because sometimes the newsletter, the newsletters come home not on the day that they're printed in the office, but they're held in the classrooms for a while. So something might have happened last week on a Thursday or Friday, but I'm not getting it to the next Friday. Because some teachers are holding it to go home in Friday folders.
Basically last week, and then we talked right before the meeting. I said, what, what did you think about that? And we haven't had a chance to talk with her, so I don't want to tell her she has an assignment through a board meeting. But I do want to talk, have Erin talk with her and say, is this something that you can take on? And we can reallocate some, some work around here to do more of, to do more of the organizationization of the website. Just the example of Corinne's product, I have the letter, just making sure we have the right information up there.
I think a very important thing that you said was consistency. If we start using things in a consistent way, then it will draw that following, and people will go to the website, for example, if they know they can find the latest information there. And I know that's a hard thing to do.
Yeah, so if you think, I mean, if you think about it, you know, I don't know what Chris, I don't know what she had, what her cost is per hour, but if we said roughly, you know, if you wanted me to do a back-of-the-umbrella cost, we're probably talking about thirty-five to four thousand, thirty-five hundred to four thousand dollars for the year. You know, I just did twenty, twenty hours, five hours a week, thirty-six weeks in the year to get myself into that ballpark. But I haven't done, I mean, I haven't done it and asked Laurie to, Laurie and Sally to put together what its whole cost is on that. But that's the type of thing I would think that. that's the type of thing I would think that, you know, it's an hour a day. Once things are set, there's some ramp-up time, it's some training time.
I think it's worth it, that's my opinion. I think if we're really going to utilize the website and that's kind of the appropriate place for that.
And for me, that's more the administration, the law school, the Amy Young would still do her work that she does to work with the teachers here in some other classroom.
The, the consistency is just huge. I don't know if you guys had noticed, but the board policies are looking much better on the website. I don't know if you've looked in the last
I haven't.
Few weeks, but
I was thinking of August.
They, they look much better, however, I asked at the policy media, it's like, well, are the WCSU policies separate somehow? Because I'm not seeing them there, and that was just kind of an oversight as far as a quick look had been given, oh, is this stuff on, online? Yup, but nobody really went through to make sure, all of them were, so, so it's getting there. But it's making sure that consistency of, so all the policies are there for people to be able to look for, not just the Berlin ones.
I think I will take some homework again here and write up something about what we discussed here, or maybe it'll be in the minutes, but maybe I'll try to, try to draft a document that will speak to what we think the purpose of board-level community engagement is. Because our homework for October is to have the executive committee and board chairs draft a written purpose and strategy for board-level community engagement. So I'll talk a little bit about the why and a little bit about some of the options for how that we've talked about today. And we can add to that at the next meeting and have something, hopefully, that'll be ready to go to the executive board, executive committee the month after, and then all of that is going to come back to the WCSU boards as a whole, to approve, hopefully, in November. So I will take that, and our next agenda item is the hiring process. Bill, did you want to speak to this?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot to write in my notes what the policy was that's in Berlin. Corinne, do you remember? We were talking at this the other day. Well, it's, it's under personnel, probably, but playing it back, it's D1, which, the, the policy that Berlin has on D1, which is the hiring process, Corinne and I were in the policy committee, because this is one of the recommended policies that we're looking at across the, and I'm sorry, I didn't put the policy in the packet, but the date on the policy is June 1, 2009. It's in that book, yeah. And this policy directs that all hiring, the final hiring decision for all positions will be the board for all staff. And as Corinne and I were talking, I saw the light bulb go on for you, Corinne, tell me if I'm mis, if I'm mischaracterizing it. But that, when I said, well, stat, this is in conflict with statute. In 2011, Act 153 was passed, which gave the, and, which gave the hiring of non-licensed staff the responsibility to the superintendent. It doesn't mean you should, you should be informed of what's going on, but that, and so that puts this policy in conflict with statute. And the way I've been trained is that statute, not always, but usually supersedes policy. So in 2011, uh, there were many changes that happened to, this was when curriculum was centralized, when special education became the responsibility of the supervisory union, many things happened in Act 153. So, under Title 16, uh, subsection 242, which is duties of the superintendent, it was select all non-licensed, all non-licensed employees. So we need to update this, and this is something we were talking about at the policy committee.
Yeah, well, so at our last meeting, I believe it was, when we, when I asked as far as that there had been a couple of hires that hadn't come to us, and Bill had said, um, well, according to statute, I do the ones that are non-licensed ones. And so I went home and kind of perused on that, but then when I was getting ready, and I looked up the statute, and, no, I looked at our policy. I said, wait, our policy says both licensed and unlicensed. That's when I wrote an email saying, hey, our policy actually says something different. But then when I was getting ready for the policy meeting and looking at one of the policies before us, the language had it where it's just licensed that we deal with. And then the, the difference, the, the key there is, it was at that meeting that Bill said, oh, well, that was changed in the statute like six years ago. Like, that's the piece that you didn't mention at the meeting, that it happened six years ago. And now I have a clear understanding as far as how it usually happens, why we are looking at the School Board Association vetted policies is to have, make sure they include things that are current with statute, but Bill also pointed out that besides that, a lot of changes in the laws and the statutes are things that he hears about from, I don't know, other, other whoever, other superintendents.
Get updated by school, state, by Vermont State School, by Vermont School Board Association, Vermont Superintendent's Association, and through AOE, um, regulation and memos.
I guess the, the only thing that I was still kind of left going, hmm, is that we've had a policy in our books for six years that was in conflict with the state's statute. And so hopefully, those are really few and far between, because I think you're right, I think you typically defer to state statute, but if you don't know what the state statute is, it's hard to have a policy in front of you saying you're supposed to do something and not realize that, uh, that's not really the way it works. So, it's still going to take the policy committee a while to get through the recommended, they've already gone through the required, but there's still a bunch of process in front of us to get everything updated.
So, the School Board Association, the Vermont School Board Association, they update their policies from?
Every year, every summer. They work with the Joint Fiscal Office and with AOE legislative staff. Joint, not joint fiscal, sorry, joint legislative, you have to help me here, Chris, with the, what's actually called, but the legislation, the stat, the legal staff that supports the
Legislative council.
Legislative council. Agency, AOE staff attorneys, and the Vermont School Board's leg, uh, attorney. They have one person that's legal staff, and they sit and work on all these and get the model policies up to date. And they usually tell us somewhere in the fall, like, our model policies are up to date now for the past legislative session. Unless there's one that's a really, um, that's getting a lot of attention, it's like hazing, harassment, and bullying. They'll, they'll jump on that pretty fast.
Yeah, because my mind was still trying to wrap around as far as, okay, like, some of those required policies that have already gone, been gone through. So, if something happens in the state statute, you know, is there anything in those model policies that says, hey, you know, I've, I've now been updated, you know, you might have passed yours in 2017, but now there's new information from 2018? But I really think it's hearing from our superintendent about changes that he's heard of going forward. But as I say, that's kind of hard to know that, well, for six years, ours didn't really say what it was supposed to.
I still think we should adopt the policies, the model policies.
Well, for the most part, that's what we're looking at doing, except for like the community engagement one, that's really not what a lot of us have been talking about, so it's really hard to say, let's just go ahead and adopt something that doesn't really look like what we talk about. But I think for the most part, there's, there's been very little changes.
So as far as the hiring process itself, we would want to be informed of hires for non-licensed staff.
Yes, you should be, you should be, and I, well, I will admit in August, I, this was one of the things I slipped with Erin, because usually Carol just took care of that for me. And it's one of the things I, Erin and I hadn't worked out, and I should have had that there for August.
We still haven't gotten anything.
No.
What we left at the last meeting was to make sure all five of us knew, that we'd get something as far as the office and the food service, and there hasn't been anything.
Yeah, I, I realize that, Corinne.
I thought something, maybe it was just, hold on. Before I misspeak, I thought.
Well, we all know that one thing about email is that sometimes computers burp. I think we've all experienced that.
Oh, that, that was one where I got a lot of questions from people, just saying, do we know who's working in the front office? Do we know?
Erin, did you send out an email that had the new, that said, please welcome our new staff?
So on, that was what I sent Friday, because I got some feedback regarding that. So Friday, it was Friday at 8:00 AM, because I sent it through to campus. It was open house, it was just a little more about start of the year, including new folks. So, if you saw that, then you got the one from Friday, about open house, so. There was nothing else, except maybe, I think my back-to-school letter maybe had that.
That's where I saw it.
Yeah.
It's the back-to-school letter packet.
Okay. I was producing that back-to-school letter, that's current. If anybody comes after that, I'll do it a different way, but.
I know, I think it was in the back-to-school packet, I don't think I put that in here, because I did see the list of.
Great. All right, move on, that's all right with everybody here. Uh, board handbook statement, and I just, I apologize for just emailing that today, hopefully you were maybe able to find it on the website before then or have seen it at some point. But this, this was from a month or two ago, Lori was going through the student handbook and asked me about some of the information in it, so I started taking a look at it, and there was a a statement from the board in there that was fairly, I, I've never seen, never, I won't say I've never seen it before. Didn't remember seeing it before, and it was fairly outdated. So I started to take a look at it and review it, and thought, that's, yeah, maybe that's something that ought to come to the board. So I took a stab at redrafting it, that's the email that you saw today. Corinne, I know you had some additional suggestions for that, and I know my, my redraft is not perfect. Mira, your email address in there, I think, was incorrect, it was missing a digit. So there are a couple of things that we, that I know we want to change to that, and I wanted to bring it here for anybody to make additional suggestions for how we word that.
Do you happen to have any hard copies of that?
I do. Two, one, one of them's got my scribbles on it, but that's fine. And then I have the document up here, which I'm happy to draft if people want to add anything to it.
And so, this one that you sent us today, which is what is in my hand now, right?
Yes.
That is different than what was in the book last year, yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it's still in the book right now, I believe.
So you, this is not anything you had drafted or you have?
I did draft that, what's in the, and I think maybe Lori held off on changing it?
Obviously.
Right.
And all that.
Oh, yes. So my draft here has Erin on it, so maybe I didn't hand you the one that's finished. That might have been what I brought to the last meeting.
That's what I'm thinking. Yeah, because it still has Carol on it.
Yeah, so that's probably, sorry, so that's probably what I brought to the last meeting, I don't have what I've drafted and sent by email. But if you want to make edits on this, I can tell you if I've already, I already made that edit.
Well, it's got Erin on it, so that's good.
I got that part, yeah.
And I think, I just don't have it with me, I did read it today, I think you had struck about school productions?
Yes.
Was anything, and would this be the place to add something about farm-to-school or makerspace or anything like that?
I don't know, what do you think? I mean, as a school director's message at the beginning of the handbook?
I really loved the farm-to-school presentation that we had and how it's finding its way into the school a variety of ways, as far as lunch, snacks, gardening, going out to farms, I think it's become a kind of big piece of what's going on at school.
Was that in your, your email comments to me?
It was.
Okay. I still have those. I could add that. Do you call out one program? Do you, you know, do you do that at the exclusion of others, or do you start getting into a big list?
Well, that, that was, that was the paragraph where there were several things, including school productions, that I thought needed to be struck because we're not doing school productions as far as I know. So, I don't think what had been in there was all-encompassing, but it seemed kind of like a trade-off to me.
All right. I can add something about that.
And I think this, the school board member terms, I think you had just taken out the how many years, and that kind of solved that problem?
It did, I think, that addressed that.
Why was there not?
Well, like, for, I don't have the right things in front of me.
Three-year term, and then had you to 2021 or something.
I think it said two-year term.
Two-year term and had you to 2021.
Right, and it's not a two-year term, Vera, you were the two-year term, I was the three-year term.
Yeah, I think I got that.
And so he just took out the number and left the year that it's doing in, so that resolved that.
I think the rest of it looked good to me.
Yeah, I, what you sent, I don't have any problems with at all.
Okay.
I had read it one earlier today when I sent you back the email, to add in my, what was the form that was dropped or something like that.
You had mentioned, Corinne, in your email to me, maybe some sort of update about the facility, talking about the renovation, talking about the roof.
Yeah.
Might be a nice thing to put in there for this year.
Yup. Because I, I, I haven't seen the back-to-school note that went to Parents' House, so I don't know if you included anything about the roof or any other renovation stuff that was done.
Have to look back to see if I
I mean, there's, there's no point necessarily in repeating stuff if it's already been out there in a place where everybody will see it, but.
There is a statement in here that we meet the second Monday of every month at 5:30, except for when we don't, is the other part of it.
So.
So I'm just trying to think of a good way to say that.
I actually had that part up.
We meet on a monthly basis?
Can we reword that to say, we meet on a monthly basis, please see the school calendar for dates and times. Dates, times, and location, and I would put location there because we do move around.
Okay. Anything else?
I think that's where the big plan. Great.
There are, there is a spot on the website where our street addresses are still listed. I thought I had heard at one point that, that people did not want their home addresses on the website. It's not like someone couldn't find them if they wanted to, but just not to call them out on the website, to have name, email address, and phone number, and leave it at that. Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I'm good with name, email, and phone number.
I think that's fine, I don't think it would hurt to maybe say that people could write to us and care of the school.
Oh, I wasn't thinking of mailing address. See, that's how we forget people who might not be on email, but they do. Hopefully. Where they could write to us.
Just thinking, I mean, that, that's an option, I mean, all of our, I'd like to think that people in the office know who we are. So if something came in the mail, that, it would get passed along to us.
Okay, I'll add that.
So on the webpage, you want it hot?
Yeah.
I guess I'm saying that.
The Berlin tab, or School Board tab is. Under the Berlin tab, or School Board tab, it's...
Yeah, I mean, I don't mind, I mean, people can Google me and they'll find that, but, but I think being consistent is good. If some people don't want it, then just say, get in touch with us.
And Erin, I'll draft all this up and send it to you and to Lori to take a look, and hopefully it'll be clear what we're asking for. And there are a couple of different places on the website where this stuff exists.
It's both below and beside, and I've never quite gotten that, other than like, the below was like part of the letter initially, but it ended up being duplicated on the side, which is...
Yeah, it got either dumped into the handbook or dumped from the handbook to be the school director's message.
Which would, which is kind of, takes up more room than it needs to, but then it's another thing as far as when they're not consistent is the issue, so.
Okay. Great, thank you. I'll take care of that.
Was there anything going to happen as far as this value statement? Is it being pulled? Is it, are we doing something with it?
The value statement, I did not, I thought it was okay, but if anyone wants to make any edits to that?
Well, but I mean, part of the question was, do we know for sure where it came from?
I don't know, I have no idea.
I was thinking that it was part of this family school compact, but I'm not positive.
Could be.
But part of it was, it didn't really say whose it is, why it's there.
That's also in the handbook?
Yes, right, opposite.
I think this came from Ms. Gothier. A few years ago, at Open House, you might remember this, right in the front entryway, she had a big post-it thing that said, you took little post-its and you wrote down your thoughts, you know, what you value at school, about a vision statement, mission statement, and you took your little post-its and you put it up on individual post-its for each separate thing that I just mentioned. And I wouldn't be surprised if what she gathered that night, somehow she worked with maybe some others in the school and came up with this.
But so is it...
But I want to say it was like Carol's first year here, that that was happening. It was, I would say, at least four years ago.
But so what are we saying then, that whose value statement is this? That it's the school that values this? That it's the community that values this? I'm still not clear.
I'm saying that's a big, I think that's where it came from, and if it is, then it's the people who are here at Open House that put their thoughts in there. But again, I'm not 100% sure that's where that came from, but I would...
All right, well, it's in the current student handbook.
I don't remember anything like that, but it doesn't mean it didn't happen, I just...
I mean, we could check in with Cindy and ask her if that's...
Well, I think, moving forward, either we leave it or we strike it, I think is where we're at, correct?
Yes.
Right, with, in my mind, if we're leaving it, though, whose, whose are we saying it is?
Does she remember who, where it came from?
Right.
We can make it our own, or we can let it go.
Do other schools' handbooks have it?
Not that I know of. There's a few, there's a few old missions still kind of floating around, but slowly as the student learning outcomes and the Washington Central Mission, it's been replaced.
I'm going to say, if we don't know where it came from exactly, and to get to the ball that it's going to take, I'd say just take it right out. If we don't know whose statement it is exactly, and I think from year to year, our families change, and to just carry it over from year to year, it could change, I mean, different people have different opinions, I would just take it.
I was just looking to see what then is going to land opposite if nothing else changed. It's the principal letter, then our thing, and then it goes to the family school compact, unless that has changed at all. Yeah, I, I think it's probably better to not have it than to not really be clear about it.
What's your thought?
Yeah. That'll be in the email too, Erin. Unless we can find a source for it easily, which I'm not sure we can. Agenda item, I don't know whether it's 2.5, an action item, the board order, just the one that we added at the beginning of the meeting. I don't have an action agenda, an action item on mine.
You might have the, Krista sent one out before she left a week ago, that Krista and I edited, as we said, what's the, what's the agenda for the meeting?
Okay, well, we're, what mine is, 3.1.
3.1, then.
So I'll make a motion to approve the board orders in the amount of $162,345.72.
I'm giving me that all the time, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
4.0 for future agenda items. Oh, sorry, is there a second?
Yeah, so moved.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
4.0, future agenda items, I have a board goals draft, a community engagement draft, and I think we'll need an Act 46 update. Any other future agenda items keeping in mind, well, I guess we can put as many on future agenda items as we want, what on, Chris? We're going to be occupied our next, truly heavily occupied our next local board meeting.
Well...
Do you need to talk about that? I do not want to say it publicly.
To be updated on if we are going to have any extra time in a position for doing the website?
I'll get you, I'll be asking you for, I'll be asking for general fund balance, use of the general fund balance to cover that, so I made a note for myself that next, next time we put an approval under action to reserve a certain amount of dollars for website work.
Okay. The other thing that I was wondering, and I didn't think to say it at the beginning of the meeting, but at the last meeting, as far as where we've ended up with teachers and classroom assignments, I just wasn't sure how things shook out as far as grade levels and teaching assignments. I know that has changed some beginning of the year, the last few years, so.
I have a regular principals report?
Yeah, we can tell you the configuration state as they were, good. Just wanted to make sure. That, what was, what was said in June, where there's one kindergarten, we've been moving to an extra three, four, is what has happened. We didn't have enough kindergartners come in for two kindergarten sections, but we can show you that, the numbers. I mean, I was, I was hoping all, the principal's saying, we're not releasing student numbers until we get past the fifth day of school, because they change kind of rapidly those first couple of days. So we can give you student numbers and a moment update.
Good. Anything else?
That comes to mind, I think that's something I'll...
Great, thank you. We will adjourn at 7:25.